Welcome to Boulder City City Council Workshop Agenda. We apologize for being a little late, but even we are subjected to challenges with time and energy and how they interrelate. So we will, Madam City Clerk, we'll call the meeting to order. Confirmation, posting, and roll call?
Thank you, yes. The agenda was posted in conformance with Nevada Open Meeting Law. We have council member Matt Fox on the phone. All other members are present in the council chamber.
Thank you. And first of all, we will open it up for public comment on matters that are on the agenda. And the second public comment when we are all done will be on anything that a person would like to speak on. So anyone who would like to come forward on a matter on the agenda is welcome to come forward. And if not, you can call 702-589-9629. And do we have any written comments?
No written comments were received.
Thank you. And if there are anybody here in chambers who would like to come forward, be more than welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing no one on the phone line, no written agenda, and no one in chambers, we will close public comment. And the agenda today is the workshop agenda, our presentation by Robin Stiles. And she has lots of experience that she will explain. And one of the things that we need to be able to do is ask questions about how it is, but not delve into our deliberation as a council, because that is not on our agenda. So this agenda is to receive a presentation and clarify in our own minds and minds of other people what questions we have on the presentation, as opposed to what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. So Ms. Stiles, would you like to begin your presentation?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's very nice to be with you this afternoon. I appreciate you providing me the opportunity to report out on the engagement with the community and the research that's been done in support of the strategic planning effort. Mayor, as you mentioned, this is an opportunity for our team, myself and my colleague Kaylee Jones, to report out on the many of the summary of findings from the many conversations, both individual and collective, that we've had with community members. And so we appreciate this time. Briefly, before I actually delve into this, I'd like to just go over a little bit of how we plan to use this time. We'll begin with a summary of work, just showing the full body and types of engagement, as well as going through the results of feedback that have been gathered through multi-means in addition to focus groups and interviews that were conducted throughout the few months preceding this evening. We'll also go over some of the themes from community meetings that took place over the last two weeks. Many of the folks here in this room were able to attend one or more of those community meetings, and so that's an opportunity for us to share out holistically some of the things that we heard over the course of those multiple evening meetings. We'll end with a SWOT analysis and then discuss next steps. All of this is meant to inform you and to provide information into the process to better inform your ultimate deliberations and discussion, which will take place at the April 18th So a bit about the summary of work and what this has encompassed over the past few months. As you can see, this has included multi-methods for residents of the community to participate in strategic planning. This has included a resident input survey, which was participated in by 344 residents, as well as an employee input survey, which received 121 responses from employees of the city of Boulder City. We also facilitated four focus groups with various groups within the city and 21 one-on-one interviews with folks in leadership and civic and nonprofit organizations. This also culminated in the facilitation of three community meetings, which had over 40 participants, 48 specifically. Those took place over the last two weeks, one of the most recent opportunity for residents to engage in our process. All of this has been consolidated, and so at the end, we'll discuss a little bit about SWOT. So basically, all of this information organized in a way that's a little bit more digestible, understanding that there is a tremendous both breadth and depth of feedback that was received from the folks who have participated in the process to date. I'll go ahead and start by jumping right into the resident input. This was an opportunity for residents to participate in a written survey. It was launched February 8th of this year, closing on March 8th of this year. It was intentionally extended two additional days to allow for additional responses to be received. Throughout the fielding period, a variety of communications were used to publicize the survey, ensuring that folks had opportunities to partake. In addition to press releases and email blasts from the city of Boulder City, there were frequent social media postings across multiple platforms that are run by the city communications team. There was printable flyer distribution with a QR code, allowing folks to take the survey wherever they were, using their technology, and also advertisements in the Boulder City Review, in addition to providing language to the council that was allowed for the survey to be distributed. Collectively, this resulted in 344 total responses received to the resident survey. A few of the first questions that we ask and that I'm going to be presenting are related to the demographics of survey respondents. That's purely so you can understand the respondents and the folks who chose to engage in this manner and in this way. As you can see, roughly 41% of our total respondents in the survey are aged 65 or above. 63% are 55 and above, which means that overall, the survey respondents skew a little bit older. Comparatively, about 30% of the Boulder City population is aged 65 or older. So it skews a little bit older, even in terms of its representation. This is not unusual. Oftentimes, when we do a survey that is fielded in this way, using a convenience sampling, it often is the case that the folks who are not necessarily working, who might be retired, tend to have a little bit more free time, and they tend to participate in higher rates than those folks who are younger, purely because when you are raising a family, potentially also working full-time, it can be a little bit harder to make the time to participate in a survey, even though it was intentionally designed to be very accessible. So again, not unusual, and also something that we frequently see in these types of public feedback gatherings. You'll also see that when it comes to the female, male, and just gender distribution, you see that it's a little bit skewed as well. So 57% of respondents here are female. As a female myself, I would say that it is great to see a high level of engagement, political engagement and civic awareness from your female residents. However, this means that there is a little bit of a skew towards the female respondents. So comparatively, based on the most recent census data, roughly 49.8%, so just under 50% of the general population is female. So you're seeing it skew both older, and then also, you're seeing more responses from females than males in the respondents. Oh, I apologize. Some of the other demographics we asked were length of time living or working in Boulder City. This is to better understand the frame of reference with which folks answer many of the questions. So for instance, somebody who has been a lifelong resident of the city might have a frame of reference that dates back to the 70s or 80s as they think about many of the investments that the city has made. A newer resident might be more likely to compare their experiences to the most recent city in which they lived. And so sometimes, we see differences based on that. This survey, this question in particular, allowed us to just delve into any of those differences. We also asked whether folks had children under 18 living in their households, just to understand whether these tend to follow the patterns based on age and gender, or whether it looks a bit different. You'll see here that just under half, so about 46% of residents have lived in Boulder City for 10 years or more, generally, a little bit of those longer-term residents, and over three-quarters do not have children under the age of 18 living in their homes. This is very consistent with what we saw on the previous slide, so it skews a little bit older. Folks that are in their 60s or 70s are a little less likely to have those younger children. Certainly, that can happen, but as a norm, that's normally not the case. A few last demographic questions. We also asked for folks to indicate their employment status, and this is a way of continuing to validate many of those same themes and trends that we saw from the questions related to age. You'll see that the majority of respondents here, or just the greatest number of respondents here, 44% are retired. And so I mentioned that this is not unusual to see a higher proportion of retired folks who choose to participate. Often, they, we see that they spend a little bit more time on these public civic engagement opportunities. Roughly 33% are employed full-time, and another 7% are employed part-time. So you've got about 40% of your sample that is working either full-time or part-time. The other, so we also asked for anybody that didn't fall within one of these categories to specify. One person indicated that they did not fall within that category, and they specified that it was "none of your business" in the open-ended responses. You'll also see that there are no full-time students that participated in the survey. One of, again, the last few demographic questions here. As a final question, we asked about household income before taxes. Of the folks who answered this question, around 30% make between $100,000 to $199,000 a year in household income, at least in 2022, while an additional 15% make $200,000 or more. So that's essentially under half, roughly just under half, that make $100,000 or more, so six digits, as a household income. For comparison's sake, in 2022, the median household income in Boulder City was $76,000. So this also skews. In addition to skewing older and more female, it does skew a little bit more affluently in terms of the sample as well. You had a very high proportion of folks in this question who declined to state, about 50 respondents, or roughly 25% of overall respondents. When it came to finally, one last question about demographics, where in the city folks lived, you'll see that the vast majority live in the green section on the far right, which is Section 3. This is about 65% of respondents, so about 2/3 of the total respondents live in an area that is sort of to the right and to the north of town. Moving away from the demographics questions, we first asked folks to engage with both the mission and the vision statement of the city, to better understand whether both of those statements were viewed as still being relevant and appropriate to the city. So to ask this question, we provided respondents with a copy of the mission statement. The mission statement is, "The city of Boulder City's mission is to deliver outstanding services to enhance the quality of life within our community, our economic vitality, and the safety of those who reside, work in, visit, or travel through our community." Of these, we asked folks to indicate, on a scale of strongly unaligned to strongly aligned, how well-aligned the city's initiatives, programs, and services were with this mission statement. So again, they were provided the mission statement and asked to respond to it. You'll see the breakdown of how folks aligned from strongly unaligned to strongly aligned here in the bar chart. You'll also see that this generated an average score to the right. And so the way that this average is generated is, we convert the strongly unaligned to strongly aligned to numerically being represented by a 1 to 5 scale. So for instance, anything that was a strongly unaligned would be assigned a 1, unaligned would be assigned a 2, and neither aligned nor unaligned would be assigned a 3. Aligned is represented by 4, and strongly aligned is represented by 5. This allows us to generate an average score. This is helpful for just being able to compare this a little bit more nicely between surveys. As you'll see, we ask a similar question of the employees. It also allows us to compare this response and others that have been converted to a numeric number to the responses that are received from other municipalities and other organizations. So you have more of a comparative reference here. The 3.5 in this case represents that it is almost, I don't know if the pointer works here, maybe? I don't know if the pointer will work on the screen. Essentially, right between neither aligned nor unaligned and aligned. So basically, between the middle teal and the deeper teal, it's right in between a 3 or 4, between those two measures exactly, at a 3.5. Comparatively, comparatively, this is a slightly lower average than mission alignment questions that we've seen with other municipalities. We ask another question here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss some of the feedback that folks gave when they had a chance to provide open-ended feedback to the question about mission alignment and relevance. So the second question related to the mission statement was, "Do you believe that the mission statement as written is still applicable for Boulder City?" So the first one is, "Is the work of the city aligning with the actual mission statement?" And the second question is, "Is it still applicable to the city, or essentially, doesn't need to be modified?" Of the folks who answered this question, 69% say that it is applicable. That's the 232 responses that say, "Yes, it is applicable." So that very high bar on the far left. We also asked folks to provide a little bit more detail on whether they thought that it was applicable or potential changes that they wanted to see. You'll see that 60 folks chose to write in and mentioned that there are no updates needed, affirming their answer that it was applicable as it is currently being written. 14 other folks provided tangible, mentioned that they wanted tangible actions. So the mission statement itself, they wanted particular wordsmithing done. Another 11 had specific wordsmithing, either an addition of commas, or "the's," or additions of clauses, so more wordsmithing than actual change of intent of the mission statement. Another eight mentioned that the mission statement was fine as is, but they wanted to see more follow-through on the city adhering to the mission statement. So no change to the statement, more a change in the action supporting it. A small number of folks shared that they wanted to see a prioritization of safety in particular, which is actually mentioned in the mission statement. And another six mentioned the need to prioritize historic preservation, even within the mission statement. Although cumulatively compared, these are very, very small numbers compared to the 300-plus total responses that we received. We asked a similarly phrased question related to the vision statement. So the vision statement, just as the mission statement was, was provided to residents, and they were allowed to react to it, asking whether the vision statement appropriately described what Boulder City strives to achieve in the coming years, which is the purpose of a vision statement, slightly different than a mission statement. The current vision statement of the city is, "The city of Boulder City is committed to preserving its status as a small town with a small-town charm, historic heritage, and unique identity, while proactively addressing our needs and enhancing our quality of life." Of the respondents here, a comparable number, so 65.25%, say that they, they affirm it and that the vision statement is applicable as it is currently written. 16%, so 55 folks, also wrote in and further affirmed that no updates are needed to the mission statement. Other open-ended responses pointed to the need to continue limiting residential growth, again, 13 responses here. And another 13 mentioned the need for continued tangible action to affirm the vision statement as it is currently aligned. So no change is needed, but the actions need to be modified to carry this forward. And then seven others had specific, specific language changes. Again, these are the commas, the periods, the rewriting of clauses, though without changes in the actual intent. Given that the city is building upon a previous strategic plan, which is concluding, we also asked residents to indicate their level of satisfaction with the five priority areas that were identified in the previous strategic plan. Each of these was provided with a little bit of detail, and respondents were asked to indicate whether they were highly dissatisfied, dissatisfied, neutral, satisfied, or highly satisfied with the progress that had been made in these areas. Similar to the previous questions, those five potential answers were converted into a 1 to 5 numeric score. In this case, a lower number correlates with less satisfaction, and a higher number correlates with higher satisfaction. So for instance, higher, highly dissatisfied would be assigned a 1, a highly satisfied would be a 5. And so the scores are going to range there. These are also sorted in descending order, so that you can see sort of the satisfaction levels as they are. You'll see that there's the highest level of satisfaction from respondents to the promotion of historic preservation. This was assigned a 3.6. Again, this is a cumulative average on that 1 to 5 scale. This is the highest average overall of any of these five areas, followed by sustaining a high level of public safety services, a 3.4. Managing growth and development, which was assigned a 3.2, and tied with achieving financial, prudent financial stewardship. The lowest responses, or the lowest or most neutral satisfaction here was related to investment in infrastructure, which was assigned a 3.1. It is not unusual. Oftentimes, I find that public works or infrastructure areas are assigned the lowest scores, often because they're the most visible. So while people might not keep on the front of mind what the financial prudence of the city is, roads are often very much top of mind because you drive on them every day, and you're more likely to have those pain points in your mind of a particular infrastructure intersection or a particular stretch of road that is perhaps difficult or more cumbersome to drive. So again, not unusual to see that that is one of the lower scores. This is also a fairly tight range, and so comparatively, when, while your strategic priority areas are not the exact same that other cities have prioritized, when we ask similar questions about evaluating areas that have been identified in a municipality's strategic plan, those often range from as low as 2.8 to about 3.7. And so your range here of 3.0 to 3.6 is actually pretty, within that range. It's also a little bit tighter than we normally see. So again, a little, normally, we see a little bit more range in terms of those ratings. In addition to asking respondents to rate the questions, and these are the same numbers that you saw on the previous slide, we've just added in a summary of the open-ended responses. We also asked residents to provide feedback on what they would like to see, additional ideas that they have for continuing to improve these five priority areas. You'll see that these are also continuing to be sorted in descending order based on the strength of their satisfaction. So when it comes to historic preservation, these are much smaller numbers, but the folks who did choose to write in mentioned maintaining the status quo, so essentially maintaining the same level of historic preservation that is currently taking place, increasing the maintenance of buildings, and then there was some opposition to strict regulations related to historic preservation. Some folks mentioned that they were overly cumbersome or difficult to navigate. Related to sustaining a high level of public safety services, there were 24 responses that mentioned concerns about the homeless population within the city. Another 20 responses mentioned that there is currently a high level of public safety and that things need to just be maintained, so continuing to maintain an already high level or standard that has been set. There is a desire, by 15 respondents, to see an increased police patrol, and then eight respondents mentioned a desire to see increased prosecution or citations for existing laws. So not the creation of new codes or laws, but more the enforcement of existing codes or citations, issuing of citations in support of existing regulations. When it comes to managing growth and development, 25 responses noted the need to continue limiting growth, and another 12 mentioned specifically limiting the land leases and sales. Also, a smaller proportion mentioned the desire to see more balanced growth, and nine others mentioned a desire to see limited housing developments. And so there's really a mixed bag here. You see folks who are very strongly in favor of more limiting of growth, others that want to see a little bit more balanced growth, and then others want to see limitations in particular types of growth. So really, across-the-board feedback. When it comes to financial stewardship, this with a 3.2 ties with the satisfaction with the growth and development area. You see a desire for improved financial transparency and accountability, and the guidance that avoiding lawsuits is a way to continue prioritizing this area, given that there are often payouts associated with lawsuits. Seven folks affirmed that the great, the financial stewardship is already great and just needs to be maintained, and another seven mentioned the need to limit exorbitant or needless spending. Finally, the infrastructure score, which again, was one of the lowest, or in this case, most moderate, this, the three correlates with a neither satisfied nor unsatisfied, so basically, a perfect and neutral. There's mention of the need to improve roads, 33 responses. Construct the pool, 16 responses. And then a desire to see removal or improvement of blighted structures throughout the city, and then improvement of the water infrastructure. We asked folks to also indicate where they believed their quality of life was in the city. And so you see that this was asked on the same 1 to 5 scale, so in this case, a poor was the equivalent of a 1, while an excellent was an equivalent of the 5. So do you think that your quality of life is poor, below average, average, above average, or excellent? In this case, a perfect score would be a 5. You see that the average is a little bit higher than some of our previous averages. This is an average of a 3.9, so just approaching, just under, above average. When you look at the breakdown on the bar chart, though, you see that 72% of your respondents say that they believe that their quality of life is above average or excellent. Roughly three-quarters, essentially, of your respondents. This is comparatively very high, so especially in municipalities that are dealing, that we've worked in, that deal with. In particular, the most recent one was dealing with some, some damage and long-term impact of environmental challenges and inclement weather. We saw an incredible decrease in their level of satisfaction. I mean, it dropped 30% over a three-year period, which is tremendous, and they are starting to rebuild. Even then, though, even prior to those inclement weather events that they experienced, theirs was just about where yours sat. On their average was a 4.1, so not statistically different, but comparable prior, and they are now trying to get back to that number. So this is where I switch things up. So we've gotten very comfortable with the 1 to 5 scale, with 5 and higher numbers being more positive feedback. This is where things get a little bit, they vary, and we get a little bit different. So we provided folks with a whole list of different services that the city currently provides, and we asked them to rank them in their level of priority. So essentially, drag and drop them. If you were given this list, drag and drop them and order them in a way that indicates how, how important they are, how much of a priority you view them as. In this case, one indicates that it is very high priority. So in, in the same way, these are just sorted in descending order. So a lower score here, this is, this is the only question where this is the case, but a lower score here means it's a higher priority. And that's purely because when we give folks a list, we think of 1 as most important, and often, lower numbers as less important when we're prioritizing. It's just sort of how our brains work as humans. So you'll see here that we've sorted these in descending order. Overall, as an average, respondents rated public safety, public works, and utility administration as the most important, followed by growth management as the fourth area, and parks- as the most important, followed by growth management as the fourth area and parks and rec as the fifth area. So again, public safety, public works, utility administration is most important. A little bit more clustering here as we look at utility administration than growth management, parks and rec. Those are all very tightly clustered there. And then a little bit of a drop down in financial stewardship and maintenance of public spaces, both with the six point three. Further down, we see conservation and stewardship efforts, historic preservation, and economic development further down. Operational excellence is the, one of the last categories, as is public outreach and communication. The other category was, and we asked, this basically is a catch-all category for things that weren't necessarily captured by any of these other service areas, was assigned the lowest score in terms of importance. We did ask if folks wanted to provide additional feedback on what those other responses would be. Some folks mentioned the need to increase the diversity of the population in the city. Only three responses. Three others mentioned focusing on an improvement of the environment. And then three others mentioned the need to solve or address the homeless population concerns. So I'm going to actually turn it over at this point to my colleague, Kaylee Jones, who is going to walk us through some of the open-ended questions that were asked. And these are a little bit more open form, intentionally to give residents a chance to provide feedback and really share any priorities that are on their mind, that they wanted to, to lift up, that might not have necessarily have been captured by some of these close-ended ranking questions.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Like Robyn said, I'm going to be walking us through some of the more qualitative findings, so asking people to provide open-ended responses to some of the questions we asked. And there we go, okay. So the question we asked here are, is are there priorities or initiatives that Boulder City is currently focused on that it should stop investing in moving forward? Otherwise known as what initiatives should we deprioritize? So we received about seventy responses, seventy written responses, which is lower than the total overall response count. So of the seventy responses, we went through and grouped them by likes, like wording, like priority, like priority to deprioritize really. So what we ended up here is a grouping of three top categories. And so the first one here is folks indicated that the pool project should be scaled back, both in size and cost. Some others believe that the proposed pool facility was elaborate or that it might not benefit the majority of the city's population. Seven folks indicated that leasing or selling land should be deprioritized. They mentioned concerns with selling or leasing land to the city of Henderson and to solar companies. And then six folks wanted a focus on the environment or a shift in how the environment was addressed. So some shared their concerns about the water crisis. Some wanted water-free landscaping. And others wanted a prioritized focus on improvement to existing parks. So following that question, we asked people to provide the biggest threats to Boulder City's future success or the biggest threats that they perceived. And we did get a much larger response count here. So we had about a hundred and seventy responses. So people provided more written response here than any other category in this resident survey. So the top one here with thirty-seven responses was around growth. So some were concerned about the impact of growth as it pertains to housing, population, economic development. Some believing that it might negatively impact affordability and resource availability. Others thought that it might bring in additional crime and increased homeless population and additional noise or light pollution. So following the, the growth as a threat, we get the homeless population. And I will say that a lot of these tend to tie into one another. So a lot of people mentioned the same things and can be grouped into several different categories. So with thirty-six responses, folks shared their concerns about the growing homeless population or the perceived growing homeless population, mentioning that the city may not have resources to assist these unhoused persons. Others were also worried that the presence of homeless population might negatively impact the appearance of the city. So those were the two largest grouping of responses. So with about half or a little less than half, we move into the loss of the small-town charm with fourteen responses. So some of the responses indicated that they were anxious about the loss of Boulder City's small-town charm, mentioning that if population increases, if we bring in more businesses, if we have, you know, over politicization of things, it might detract from the city's special charm. And others noted that the lack of infrastructure and maintenance kind of deters from that small-town feeling. So this is just going more in-depth into the same question because we did have a lot of responses here. So the, the fourth largest grouping was, with eleven responses, was city of Henderson encroachment. So some participants shared that the, they were concerned about the city's overgrowth from the city of Hendersons and how it might negatively impact or limit the city's resources, such as safety, land use, water consumption. And they also indicated that they didn't want to destroy the beauty of the city or to build additional housing. So again, you go kind of back into the growth, back into loss of small-town charm. Like I said previously, a lot of these tie into another. So if you have a perceived growth, you're going to be concerned about growth and you will be concerned about a loss of small-town charm. So the next one here is with ten responses is concern over housing developments. Some shared that they were concerned about the influx of cookie cutter housing developments. And others shared that new housing developments might negatively impact the community's culture. And some others indicated that there is an opportunity for mixed-use housing development, meaning having more than just single-family large residents. So maybe having apartments, townhouses, condos, just more mixed-use housing development, which could bring in or diversify the population. So the last one here is with ten responses as well, the lack of diverse businesses. So some shared that they were concerned about the perceived failure to attract diverse types of businesses, noting that there may be a lack of initiative to retain vital businesses. And of the, the businesses that were noted as a priority, a second grocery store was by far the most requested. And the last open-ended response that we had for this survey was just a catch-all. Do you have any additional feedback that you think may inform our strategic planning processes? And we received eighty-two responses here. So a, a pretty decent grouping of, of responses was able to be made. So the highest one here with fifteen responses was a focus on the town's aesthetics. And aesthetics being cleanup of the town sidewalks, storefronts, signage, vacant buildings, really anything in the downtown area. And others also provided that landscaping should be a priority of the city to promote its appearance. The second largest grouping was, with six responses, was to prioritize additional activities. So some folks shared that they'd like the city to host additional events or provide additional activities for both residents and to promote tourism. And of these events or activities, people indicated their desire for a community recreation center, the pool facility, additional bike trails, hiking trails, and museums. The last one here with six responses as well was to prioritize business investments. So some responses shared that they would like to see additional businesses going up in the city, especially the grocery store, and they would also like to see a mall with diverse shopping options. And others expressed that the city needs additional medical providers, medical technology, such as family doctor. And I'm going to pause before we move into the next portion, if anyone has questions at this time.
Any questions?
I had a question of the first part.
Go for it.
Just a little simple one. How many use the QR code? How many use the QR code to do this form?
That is not something that we track because it all goes to the same URL. So I'm sorry, we-
Okay, so you can't. I just wondered how many use the QR code versus going online and doing it.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I believe that the majority, it all goes to the same online code. And so we, we aren't able to track that. I apologize.
Okay, then I had one other that I didn't quite understand. I'm sorry, on page, vision statement and suggestions here. It said two hundred and thirty-two participated in, in one portion of it, but only fifty-five. I mean, you don't have, you don't have that many over here in the count number.
Oh, yes, so the, and I can go back if, if that would be helpful. It's this one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the question, the bar chart on the left is in response. It's a summary of the responses that was asked in a multiple-choice question. So is the current vision statement applicable to the city as it's written? And so in this case, two hundred and thirty-two responses said that it was. In addition to that question, we asked a separate question that said, what other, do you have any recommendations on what you would like to see changed in the vision statement? And so the, the chart on the right is a summary of that, the responses to that open-ended question of would you like to see any changes? And in this case, fifty-five people took the time to write in that open-ended question. They didn't want to see any changes.
And the others did not. I get you, okay. Thank you. I just wondered how that matched up like that. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to the employee input survey. So in a very, let me get back to where we were. The employee input survey will present in a very similar way and also provide space for questions, just because we're kind of going through each of the, the feedback areas in a cluster. So the employee input survey, this was something that was launched in February. It was launched on February twentieth and then closed the end of the day, March thirtieth. So a slightly shorter fielding period. Frankly, that's because it's easier to communicate directly with employees of a particular organization sometimes than it is with overall residents of a city. Fielding communication here included the distribution of a survey link. The survey was also online and reminders that were sent out by Taylor Tetter, by the city manager. Multiple reminders were sent through this fielding period to gather responses. In total, one hundred and twenty-one responses were received. This is the equivalent of about thirty-four percent of the city's workers. So similar to the resident survey, we asked a few questions related to demographics to better understand who we had in our respondent base. You'll see that one of the first questions here was employee type. We asked whether they were full-time or part-time employees. This is because we intentionally included part-time employees as well in the sample, understanding that they might have a different experience as an employee. They tend to do different jobs than the full-time folks. We also asked for their roles. So you'll see here that roughly forty-two percent of our respondents are frontline or crew members, while another thirty-two percent are middle managers. And so this skews a little bit lower to the middle manager, the folks who are on the ground. That also is representative of the overall breakdown of employees. You can't have a hundred and fifty people who are department heads, for instance, in an organization that has three hundred-plus employees. We also wanted to better understand how long folks have worked for the city of Boulder City and then also whether they were residents of the city. So thirty-five percent of our respondents have worked for the city for eleven or more years. So that's anywhere from eleven to more than twenty. You'll see that on the bar chart on the left, though, there really is a drop-down in the folks who have been here for more than twenty years. While we know that there's a slightly larger population here, only four of them chose to participate in the survey. You also have a high proportion that have worked for the city for between one to five years. About one-third of your, your respondents have been here for that one-to-five-year period. Sixty-one percent of respondents are residents of Boulder City. And so they not only work for the city, they also live in the city. Thirty-nine percent do not. They commute in from another municipality. You'll see some similar questions. So just as we asked residents about the alignment of the mission statement, we also asked employees to respond to this. You'll see that it was converted to that same one-to-five scale. So how aligned do you think our mission statement is from strongly unaligned to strongly aligned? Here, the overall score from employees was a three point five. This is the exact same average as the resident survey, which also ranked this a three point five. So no, no real differences here between residents and employees. Similarly, we asked whether the mission statement was still applicable. In this case, seventy-nine point eight, so just under eighty percent, say that it is applicable. This is actually much higher than the residents rating of the applicability of the mission statement. So residents, sixty-nine percent of residents said that it was applicable. Just under eighty percent of employees say that it is still applicable. So a little over a ten percent difference here. When it came to open-ended responses related to the mission statement, ten folks mentioned that there are no updates needed. Five mentioned that there's a need to continue following through on the statement as it is currently written. So no change to the statement, changing, changes on the actions to make sure that it's being carried forward. And three had specific language changes. So again, the commas, the periods, the rewriting of the clauses without change in intent. We also asked the same question that was asked of residents related to the mission statement. So is the mission statement as it is currently written applicable? Here, we see that seventy-six percent of employees say that it is still applicable. They answer affirmatively to this question. This is also significantly higher than the residents. On the resident side, you saw that sixty-nine percent of residents said that it was applicable. So a seven percent gap there in terms of it, where, where employees are more likely to say that the mission statement and the vision statement are still applicable. Residents are a little bit more, a little bit more either unsure or ambivalent about the, the use of both of those statements. Here, we see a higher number of proportion of folks who say that there are no updates needed to the vision statement and a slightly smaller proportion who mentioned the need to, again, continue to act in a way that supports the mission statement or mention the need for additional business participation to make the vision a reality. So here we have a variety of statements. And so these are statements related to various aspects of employee engagement. There are a few reasons why we ask these questions. Oftentimes, the engagement of employee can be a predictor of their overall productivity. The folks who care and are engaged by their work tend to show up to work more, to call out sick less, and tend to have longer tenure with the organizations. So more staying power. So this can have a real impact on turnover rates and just overall efficiency of organizations. Each of these ties to a different area of engagement here. And so you see this variety of statements. We've sorted these in descending order so that you can see sort of the, the areas of strength at the top, the areas of opportunity a little bit further down. We've also split this down so that you can see the difference between full-time workers and part-time workers, keeping in mind, though, that the majority of respondents are full-time city of Boulder City employees. Small, far smaller proportion work part-time. Interestingly enough, across a few of these different measures, you see that especially for some that are a little bit further down, part-time workers are actually more likely to answer affirmatively on things like, I feel respected and valued by my direct supervisor, where there's a whole point difference, as well as I would recommend working for the city of Boulder City to my best friend, a point-three difference. And then also a pretty big difference here when, related to feeling motivated to come up with new and better ways of doing things and feeling as though they are kept informed about matters that impact them. Really significant differences there. You'll also see that overall, across these statements, it's a fairly wide range. So at the lowest end, this is assigned a three point five. And again, this is on the same five, one-to-five scale. So three is middle or neutral. A five is that folks strongly agree with the statement. A one is that they strongly disagree. So higher scores, better, greater satisfaction. I will say that when it comes to understanding the importance of their roles within the city, so that is a little bit higher than we've normally seen within other public sector organizations. The first statement as well, I have the skills, knowledge, and training to do my job well, which was assigned an overall average of four point six. That is also a little bit higher. Normally, we see that hovering around the four point two, four point three range. So there is more affirmation, folks feel more equipped to do their jobs compared to other public sector employees. One of the next measures, I feel, I'm sorry, I am proud to work for the city of Boulder City. That's a four point two. That's, that's essentially on, on par with the average of what we see within public sector- That's essentially on par with the average of what we see within public sector organizations. The job satisfaction, though, "I am satisfied with my job." Often, this ranges between about a 3.6 to 4.2 in terms of range. And so, you see that this overall satisfaction of a 4.0 is right about where we would see. So, this is the equivalent of agreement, essentially. When it comes to the question about being willing to recommend working for the city to a friend, which was assigned a 3.9, that's on par with what we see at other municipalities, as is the question about being motivated to come up with new and better ways of doing things. This is without fail always one of the lower statements in terms of ranking, particularly in public sector organizations. Partially, it's because public sector organizations often are a little bit more complex and broad and it takes a little bit more time because there are many checks and balances to processes and systems. And so, while in the private sector where the score tends to be a little bit higher, somebody can go out and decide to make a change and just enact it. While in public sector organizations, for good reason, there are a little bit more oversight processes that need to be navigated before especially wide-scale changes can be enacted. So, it's not unusual to see that that's a little bit lower. You see that when you get to the lowest or the very last statement, though, "My supervisor or department keeps employees informed about matters affecting me." That is a 3.5. That is actually a little bit lower than we normally see. Normally, that's around a 3.8. That represents a real opportunity, though. So, as you think about how to roll out potential changes, as we think about communicating priorities, perhaps those that are identified in the strategic plan, there's an opportunity to maybe be a little bit more innovative and creative in both the how, so the medium, and also the frequency with which communication is happening and making sure that it's not just coming from the folks at the very top, but also folks from even that middle manager position with the people that they manage and the crews. This next question is a very simple one. It's, "Would you, if given the opportunity, would you reapply for your job?" And I'm sure that there are times where all of us in our careers have perhaps asked ourselves the same question. When we ask the City of Boulder City employees this question, though, 84% say that they would reapply for their jobs. This is a fairly typical number. Normally, it hovers around that 85%. The highest that I've ever seen in a public sector organization is 88%. So, it's not particularly different from that number. When we asked folks to specify why they would or would not reapply for their job in an open-ended question, you see the responses on the right. So, the folks that say that they would reapply mentioned that they love their job, they like making a difference, and they love the working hours. So, it is unique to have the schedule that is afforded for the folks who are employed by the city. For the people who wouldn't reapply, a smaller number mentioned that they didn't believe that they were provided a competitive wage or they had individual issues or challenges with their supervisors or they felt that they were within an environment that had increasing limitations on their abilities to progress. Similar to the residents, employees were also asked to rank, essentially, rank the work of the city in achieving the five areas identified in the strategic plan. You will see that there are quite a few differences here in how employees rated and responded to these questions compared to residents. So, this is where not just the numbers, but actually the order of these areas changed a bit. For employees, achieving financial, prudent financial stewardship was rated the highest or best performing, tied with historic preservation and sustaining a high level of public safety services. So, again, all three of these are tied for first. Do not read into the ordering there. Just pay attention to the number. Managing growth and development was assigned a 3.4. And again, infrastructure continues to be one of the more challenging areas, mostly because it's the most tangible to rate, at a 3.1. This is a fairly tight cluster here. Compared to residents, residents were most likely to say that historic preservation and then public safety were the areas with greatest satisfaction and achieving financial steward, I'm sorry, achieving prudent financial stewardship was fourth for residents. And so, a very significant difference in both ordering and in the actual scores. Infrastructure was the lowest for residents. It was actually slightly lower. While employees rate this a 3.1, residents rated a 3.0. Employees were also provided the opportunity to identify some opportunities for internal process improvements. So, this is essentially an opportunity for them to highlight any processes that they thought could be improved, any areas of opportunity specifically related to how things work on the inside. So, particular processes that might be a little less visible to the general public as they interact with the city. You'll see that these have very small numbers of responses, but there are very clear themes here. The first is around communication. The desire here is to see more communication. This is actually tied with the responses on that, the statement ratings, where we saw that communication was the greatest area of opportunity. It was the lowest average satisfaction score. That's echoed here in this open-ended question related to areas of potential improvement. A smaller number of folks also mentioned the opportunity for integrating automation or just better utilizing technology in some of the processes. So, moving beyond hard paper processes that require scanning signatures, maybe physically walking papers between departments and moving to processes that are a little bit more integrated with each other. Some also mentioned internal systems and databases that were cumbersome. Oftentimes, it's because technology is changing so rapidly that even a new system that might have been new five to seven years ago, it can be a little bit more cumbersome compared to things that are coming out now just because of the speed of technological innovation is frankly just so sped up at this point. The final area here is around accountability and evaluation. So, they'd like to see, a smaller number of folks mentioned the desire to see opportunities to provide feedback more regularly through employee surveys or for an investment in really skills that allow them to be more effective in their job. So, customer service training for those folks who are working with the general public. Potentially, use of secret shoppers to make sure that there's a high level of accountability and quality in the services that are being provided to the public. This is the same ranking question that was also provided to residents. You will see here that there are, there's a bit of movement here, just as we saw with the rankings on the five areas within the strategic plan. So, when employees were asked to identify the areas of greatest priority, public safety was top, followed by financial stewardship and economic development, and then public works. Operational excellence is also much higher. So, operational excellence was one of the lowest ratings from the resident side. It is the fifth highest on the employee side. So, thinking about process improvements, providing high levels of customer service. You also saw that in the open-ended responses on the previous slide, where I think that there's an interest in wanting to maintain and continuing to deliver a high level of quality service for residents as they interact with the city. You'll see at the bottom, Parks and Rec is actually rated a little bit lower, followed by Growth Management, Public Outreach and Communication, which was also low for residents, and Historic Preservation, which is one of the lower for employees. Many of the functions that are rated more highly for these employees in the rankings are more of the, more of the sort of key tangible, sort of more non-negotiable services that a municipality can provide, right? Public service, public works, economic development as well, that might have more of an active, traditional role in municipal functionings. I'm going to turn it over to Kaylee now. So, she's going to walk through the last open-ended of the resident, I'm sorry, the employee survey. And then we'll stop and kind of pause and allow for discussion around those questions in the same way that we did with the resident survey.
The last question we asked for employees was regarding areas of improvement. So, we asked for employees to identify one to two areas of improvement that they would like for the city to focus on. This did receive a smaller number of written-in responses, but we were able to group by priority and group by quantity of responses. So, the top rated or the top implied response here was public safety with six responses. So, employees indicated that prioritizing public safety was a really high priority for the city and mentioned that increasing the number of police officers and firefighters, modernizing equipment, and approving police and fire facilities, as well as the, for the public safety department, was a priority. The next one with five responses was around improving new business processes. So, some folks mentioned that the business permitting process was a bit cumbersome and there was a way to improve processes by making them quicker, more efficient, and straightforward. With four responses, improved communication was entered here. And this ties back into what we've seen throughout regarding better communication practices. So, really, this is just reiterating, folks would like to see improved communication, both between staff and between city employees and to residents. And then the last one here with four responses as well was, folks mentioned that they would like to see the pool constructed as soon as possible. And that's the last one for our employee survey. Are there any questions on that survey? If not, I'll walk into the next section then. So, we're going to dive into our focus groups and interviews. So, in summary, we conducted four focus groups. And you can see that we facilitated these with the student council at the high school, the senior center, Nevadans for the Common Good, and the Chamber of Commerce. In addition to these four focus groups, we also conducted 21 interviews. And you can see how this is broken out, but we did have nine staff members, four city council persons, a mayor, library representative, emergency aid representative, Southern Nevada Railroad Museum representative, Linda Hand, the Community Resource Liaison, a senior center representative, and a Chamber of Commerce representative. So, we really kind of tried to reach out to as many people as we could to get as many different viewpoints as we could. And from there, we tried to group things and just provide a report out on what we heard. So, for our focus groups, we asked, "What's the best part about living in Boulder City? What makes you want to stay here? What is your favorite thing about being here?" And these were the responses that we heard. And really, it's kind of all wrapped up in the last bullet here. An intentional community with opportunities to engage, volunteer, and build strong communal relationships. So, participants really indicated that they love the small-town charm. They love the historic nature. They love the uniqueness. They love the friendliness. They love the overall welcoming vibe of the city. And what was notable here is people really mentioned that the multitude of active nonprofits and passionate volunteers was what made the city so unique because you don't really see that in a lot of other municipalities, specifically smaller municipalities. And in addition, other people mentioned that they enjoyed the safety, the walkability, and again, just the general friendliness of the community. We also asked focus groups, "What are some of the challenges that Boulder City is currently facing?" And you can see, we did get this quote and we tried to pull it out, so it was highlighted here. "The current demographics and lack of affordability are not conducive for younger generations or families looking to stay or move to Boulder City." And that was a theme that we were hearing across focus groups, was the need to diversify the population, the need to bring in additional and younger families. And in order to do this, we may need to build more housing, may need to focus on affordable housing, and may need to diversify businesses to bring in those younger families and younger generation of people. It was also mentioned that the diminishing number of tourists, specifically visiting Hoover Dam and surrounding outdoor recreational areas, was a challenge. There was also a challenge, challenges related to business creation and operation. Going back to what we heard from the employee survey, focus groups indicated that the business permitting process was kind of cumbersome as well. And kind of tying back into the need to diversify, they indicated that there's challenges operating businesses, including the ability to hire and retain necessary staff. So, if you don't have the population of younger folks that are here to work and kind of do those lower-wage jobs, it's harder for businesses to keep those lower-wage spots filled. And then there's challenges related to the cost of living and affordable housing, specifically for senior housing cost of living, or senior housing, affordable housing, sorry. And then the last one here with focus groups were priority areas. And you can see the themes here. So, balanced growth, affordability, housing, making things ADA compliant, stabilizing the community liaison position, and diversifying businesses. So, while folks indicated they love the small-town charm, they did indicate that they would like to see more balanced growth, more diversification of the population, the economy, businesses here. And in order to do that, improving affordability and reducing the overall cost of living was a priority, as well as prioritization of mixed-use housing developments, subsidized housing, and affordable housing for the senior population 55 years of age or older. It was also mentioned the need to prioritize investing in ADA compliance. So, updating sidewalks, streets, entryways, and public buildings to be ADA compliant. Focus groups also really iterated how they love the community liaison position, how beneficial it was. And they were concerned that having it only for four years may be a detriment to the city. So, they wanted to prioritize stabilizing that position for a longer term. And they also mentioned the priority to diversify businesses in the city, primarily that serve basic needs, so medical services and the grocery store. So, that was it for our focus groups. We'll move into some of the interview themes and at the end, we'll take questions on all of them. So, for interviews, we kind of asked similar questions, but we asked, "What are some of the differentiators or strengths of the city?" And you can see the quote here, "Visiting or living in Boulder City is like taking a step back in time." It's really backing up what the focus groups heard, what we heard from surveys. People love living here. They love the historic nature. They love the small-town charm. People also have a strong sense of pride in city operations, which was indicated by city employees and the general community. Folks also mentioned that the diversity of events and programming offered throughout the city was a differentiator. And really, the slower pace of living, that residents are more likely to wave, help their neighbor out, and just a promotion of the sense of community and the pleasure of the small-town living. We also asked interviews, or during our interviews, we asked, "What are some of the challenges that Boulder City faces now and in the future?" So, business licensing, the business permitting process was indicated as a challenge in the interviews as well. New construction permitting, site inspections, the large population of people living in the city with no transportation, voter approval requirements, call for the population to be informed in order to make important decisions, and older infrastructure and maintenance of the owned infrastructure by the city. Interviewees also noted the perceived growing homeless population. And you can see in the quote here, "People want more services and expect a high quality of service, but they don't want to pay for it," was mentioned. Really, really, the challenges here are, we want to improve, but we don't know how to get funding and we don't know how to do it. So, these were indicated as some of the challenges that the city faces. And we also asked, "What are the priorities or opportunities?" So, expanding emergency services, police, fire, equipment, and departments and facilities. There was also a mention need for improved broadband or fiber connectivity and internet speed, which is something we hadn't seen yet thus far. So, during our interviews, it was indicated that this could be an area of potential for the city. It was also mentioned the need to identify methods to engage with the community to better combat the spread of misinformation, going back to what we've heard throughout of the theme of better communication, trying to find out a way to combat misinformation. There was also a priority to invest in additional public meeting spaces, to invest in sustainable and affordable housing, to continue and leverage renewable energy leases, improving infrastructure, specifically roads, which again, is something we heard throughout, especially during the surveys. A lot of folks indicated the need to improve roads. There was also a need to prioritize or make an additional focus on making those ADA improvements. And it was mentioned that lessening historical preservation efforts, allowing older buildings to be revitalized or repurposed without strict regulations could be an opportunity for the city. And that is all we have for our focus groups and interviews. Are there any questions on that section? Great. I'll turn it back over to Robin.
So many of you had the opportunity to, um, participate or get to view some of our community workshops. Um, and some of the folks in the audience here also had the chance to participate. So there are some familiar faces here. So we're grateful for those folks who did take the time. Um, there are a lot of things that people can be doing in the evenings, um, after the working day. And so we're grateful that um, quite as many people, as did, um, chose to spend some time with us thinking and dreaming about what the future of Boulder City could look like. Even from the start, so when, when folks were coming in and getting signed in and getting situated at their, their tables, um, we asked them to participate in a little bit of a collective group art project, um, envisioning what the future of the city could look like. And so there, there was this large poster, as you can see in the picture, roughly five feet by three and a half feet. And we had folks take a marker and write down a few of the things that they wanted to see as they, um, thought about the future of the city. And so this is what it looked like at the end of all three of those community meetings. Um, I think one of the best parts is that, um, as we went to the later meetings, folks would take markers and they would put yeses or hearts next to the things that they liked to see and also additions and underlining. And so, um, if you get a chance to spend a little bit more time looking at this, many of the themes though, sort of anecdotally that you'll see here is, um, there's a lot of interest in the pool. As you can see from the fact that the pool is written in the middle in pretty big letters. Um, there's also a desire to continue maintaining the small town feel. So all of the things that, that Kaylee shared that are real strengths and differentiators of the experience of being part of the Boulder City community. Folks love that. Folks want to see it. Many of the things that they point to, um, that they like to see investments are span a really broad breadth of topics. Everything from utility and water investment, um, as well as live music and more of the amenity side of things. You're going to also see that in the feedback that I'm going to share about what, um, the conversations were about in these community meetings. And so a tremendous breadth of, I think, perspectives and also on priorities that come out of this. And so this is representative of the, I think, forty-five plus folks who participated in those three meetings across those two weeks. So we started off a little bit slow. Um, the first meeting only had five participants, but we, we, um, got a little bit more speed and enthusiasm going. So by, by later that week, we had fourteen participants at our second meeting and we had twenty-nine participants at our third meeting. So those folks who participated in the third meeting, I think, got the better interaction than necessarily those folks at the first one. Um, on the right is a, one of the flyers that we used to publicize these events. So one of the first questions that we asked was around opportunity and priorities. So as you think about the opportunities that the city has to either further differentiate itself or really, um, invest in some of maybe the infrastructural or amenity or, um, priorities, that it, it can think about in the coming years, what are those things that come to mind? Um, really eight dominant themes came through. We saw the need for, um, continuing to advertise and leverage the existing physical infrastructure. So there are great hiking and biking trails. There are tremendous city events, whether it's a one-time event or a recurring festival that happens yearly. These are all parts of the things that make Boulder City a very strong community and that are also very attractive to bringing in folks from across the valley or even broadly. Um, the people who are visiting Southern Nevada, maybe for other reasons, but who want to get out of, of Las Vegas and come and enjoy something different. So it's a huge attractor. It's also an opportunity to continue promoting one-day getaways, even for those Southern Nevada residents who can come out for the day or maybe the weekend. There also was, um, a desire to see more investment in ADA-related needs. And so this came up in a variety of different contexts. Um, we had, um, many folks who pointed to the fact that it's, it's also tied to the population. So we know that the Boulder City population skews a little bit older than the general population in Nevada. And with that, often comes greater need for ADA compliance, um, and also accessibility. How do we make sure that the city is accessible, not just for its residents who do skew a little bit older, but also for those folks who want to come and enjoy the amenities that are here, maybe come for a weekend? How do we make sure that we're able to serve them and it's an accessible environment for them? Um, when it came to the housing side, the needs of residents, um, folks pointed to the desire for additional subsidized senior housing developments. They mentioned that there are very long wait lists for the existing current subsidized housing. And they, they saw a need for more of that offering within the city to make sure that the senior community is being served. Often because this population might have a limited budget, um, with which to deal with the rising cost of living. There was also, um, a fair amount of discussion around the desire for mixed-use housing development. So instead of having a housing development that comes in and builds traditional stick-belt, um, single-family homes that tend to be a little bit larger, being a little bit more creative in what that makeup could look like, that could also serve, um, potentially seniors, but also maybe younger families who, um, might have a different price point as they're entering the market. Allowing them to use housing as a way to diversify the population a little bit more and bring in those younger families. Um, the internet accessibility also, um, was discussed, um, as its own topic, but I think is related to many of the things that we've discussed. Particularly for those younger families who might telework, high-speed internet is going to be a premium. It also means that, um, folks that currently live in the community are going to have better access to services, to information, to resource navigation as well. So high-speed internet is one of those investments that could or would serve, um, a broad swath of both the existing population. Also could be an attractor for those folks who might want to come for the weekend, but do need access to that internet or think that they need access to the internet on a weekend. Um, construction of the pool, as you saw from the poster, is also, um, what, a very high, um, a very energized discussion. So a lot of discussion on the desire for a pool, a desire for the amenities to make sure that it was a resource that was available to residents. Um, there is varied discussion on the scope and what that pool should look like, but there tended to be pretty significant agreement, um, that there needed to be an investment in the pool, that the current pool had some major, um, infrastructure flaws, leaks, um, wasn't necessarily providing the best experience for those folks who seeked, sought to use it. Um, one of the ideas that came out, um, in discussion was the possibility of using the solar leases and actually increasing them. So you've seen in the previous report out that there are varied, I think, varied opinions about the solar leases. One of the ideas that came out from, um, one of the meetings was this possibility of using increased solar leases um, as a way to, um, provide electric, electric rebates for low-income persons. So reducing the cost of living through the city-owned utilities because that's something within the purview of the city. While not necessarily, um, all of these other opportunities fall directly within action that the city itself can take. Finally, the, one of the last themes was the, um, possibility of recognizing and preparing for the limited water supply. Um, we know that there continues to be a shortage, um, of, of water in the long term and that conservation needs to be top of mind. So thinking about ways to not just, um, be a little bit more conservative in water usage, but also, um, potentially reclaiming and reusing water. So more diligence in the use and the cyclical sort of retention of that water. You will see what looks like ice cream cartons, um, lined up on the table. Um, these are not ice cream cartons. So in the same way that we asked, um, survey participants to prioritize, um, the areas or, um, potential focus areas of the city, we also asked our workshop residents to participate in a similar way. So workshop participants were provided coins, um, fake coins, not chocolate fake coins, but fake coins. Um, they were, each provided the same number depending on which workshop that they were at. And then they were given the option of thirteen different categories where they could spend their money. Um, essentially allowing them to vote with their priorities, but providing them coins and also providing them covered buckets, um, with which to do their voting, means that they couldn't necessarily just look at what area was already receiving the most coins, that they had to make the decision for themselves. So each of the buckets was labeled with different fields. You'll see here that, um, we've sorted this in descending order based on the number of votes or coins that were spent on each priority area. And so you'll see that the other category actually received the highest number of votes. That is largely because of our second and third groups. That included, um, a large group of folks in the second group who put their money towards the other bucket um, and then specified that they wanted that to be in ADA compliance. So updating of the sidewalks and the buildings towards ADA compliance. In, in the third group, um, you saw a very, very high number of, um, votes or coins in the other category. That actually, um, was the only group where we had, um, junior high and high school students in attendance. And so they and their families and many of the folks who skewed a little bit younger there, um, put their coins in the other box and then actually wrote out that they wanted to see more investment in, um, potential services or businesses that served youth, providing opportunities for young people to have things to do, whether that was high schoolers all the way up to folks in their early to mid twenties. So continuing to reinforce the retention of the youth so that on weekends, they aren't going to other cities and spending their money. They're spending it right here in town. Um, and also as an attractor for getting and keeping younger families and younger folks, um, here with attractions that are based in the city of Boulder City. You'll see that there's a very large gap there. So again, I, I mentioned those three top areas for the other. You'll see that Parks and Rec, um, was included as the second highest number, followed by Growth Management, Public Works. Those three are really, really closely cul- um, clustered. Parks and Rec, of course, includes the pool, which as mentioned was, um, a key topic of information. Growth Management was related to, um, being intentional about the growth of the city. Um, some folks voted on that because they wanted to continue to maintain the small city. And some folks, um, voted on that because they wanted to make sure that the growth ordinance was fully realized. So that they, that there was enough growth that it was actually bumping up against the cap each year, which is not, um, always the case. You'll see that further down, you have a really tight cluster against Parks, Parks and Rec Growth Management and Public Works. You see a little bit of a drop down, um, with public safety. That's interesting because public safety was very, very highly rated in the survey. So when people are sitting there and answering a survey by themselves, public safety is top of mind. When they're having discussions, when they're thinking about what they want to see in a different setting, granted it's a different group of people, but this is after a discussion of a lot of other things. The top things that come to mind are, again, Parks and Rec and then some of the more, um, targeted or more limited priorities. But they put all of their money in the other. The folks that were voting for things like the youth activities or the ADA compliance, they were putting all of their money in that bucket. There was really a strong prioritization of those areas, which is why you see such a gap between other and then the second greatest number.
How, how many coins did they get and how many people were there?
So in total, there were forty-five participants. Um, and because we had a limited number of coins, there were different numbers of coins that were given. The first, um, the first and the second, um, meetings, they received seven coins each. Each individual person had seven coins to spend. And because we had such a, um, strong turnout at our third, each person there received five coins.
Mr. Mayor, can I also ask a question, please? Uh, is, is there a possible perception by those participating, uh, it's hard to quantify perception, uh, that since they were given coins, that they were placing those in the buckets? They thought they wanted money to be spent rather than emphasis? That's my question to you.
Absolutely. I think that that is a function. So, um, even in explaining something, there's a difference between asking a question in a single-sentence instruction, which is what was done in a very uniform way across the resident and employee surveys, versus when you have a group of folks and you're explaining how, um, sort of the voting function of the coins works. So I agree that, I think that their perception could be a different. Um, I would also point to the fact that when you see the output of this prioritization exercise, um, folks in many cases put all of their coins in a single bucket. And for instance, while Parks and Rec is the second highest vote-getting function, you can't necessarily have a functioning town if you put all of your money into a single category and you don't spend a little bit of money on the other things that are being prioritized. I think the people would be very mad if they had a pool but no roads.
Yeah, it kind of feels, um, like i- each one acted independently rather than collaboratively, right?
I would agree.
Okay.
I would agree that it is very much an individual interest that was being carried out in this exercise.
Thank you for that clarification.
Once we got folks settled back down after the coin exercise, which was, um, I think a fan favorite or participant favorite, um, we also asked them to think about, um, thinking a little bit bigger. So beyond all of the things that had been discussed at that point, this was normally at the hour and a half point of these two-hour meetings. Um, the questions were, what big ideas or activities haven't necessarily been captured or discussed? What did we miss essentially in our discussions? Um, and then we also asked them, you know, what, what should the future of Boulder City look like? If you were to describe a successful, thriving Boulder City in twenty-twenty-eight or twenty-thirty, what words would you use? So both of those are captured here. When it came to additional ideas or, um, the, the tasking of thinking really big and expansively on potential areas, um, folks mentioned additional, additional preventative services. So thinking about the need for mental health really throughout the city, not just for a single population, but serving everybody from youth all the way to the elderly population. Um, a desire, as you saw in some of the previous reporting outs, of, um, more institutionalizing and permanently funding the community liaison position, which is currently being funded through multi-year grant funding, um, through federal grant money. Um, there's a desire to see more community engagement. So, um, I think in every single conversation, folks looked around the room and said, well, I'm, I'm glad that I'm here. I'm glad that I'm participating and I'm having the opportunity to engage with my neighbors. Where is everybody else? Why are they not here? Why are they not engaging? One of the ideas for how to encourage more of that participation is through, um, a creation of task forces. So that there is a resident engagement component and accountability in each of these areas. There is also a desire to see more implementation of the controlled growth ordinance, um, specifying that, um, that should be as it was written. So using it for controlled growth as opposed to no growth. There's a desire to see, um, a little bit more of that investment in a central community center. So folks mentioned that that could be a hub where multi-generations, the senior center works for the senior population, but there isn't an equivalent necessarily for youth. So having a physical infrastructure where even some of those age groups and demographics could inter- interact with each other, intermingle, um, versus being a little bit more siloed in their current activities. Um, and then a desire to see enforcement of existing codes and laws. Um, this was primarily related to traffic. So parking, um, and many of the, the codes and the requirements there, um, building permitting, so compliance with the current codes that are written. And then also sidewalk usage, and that's more related to ADA compliance. So making sure that sidewalks are accessible for folks so that then the, the codes and the, um, the laws that are currently in place can be enforced because the, the sidewalk is actually accessible for those varied populations. Um, the final area is similar to the other category on our previous ranking discussion, was around creating spaces and activities for youth and teens. So that's, um, the thought of continuing to keep the, the students and, and young people here. One parent who, um, whose children were actually also in attendance and participating in the discussion, mentioned that she and her family had moved to Boulder City because it is safe. She loves that it is a small town. She loves that it is safe. She loves that her, her, her children can walk around in the evenings. She feels very comfortable walking around in the evenings. The unfortunate challenge though, is that when her, her children want to go and spend time with friends, those friends go into Greater Las Vegas. They go into the city of Henderson. And so they're sending them back in for recreation to the area that they intentionally don't want to live in because of some of the safety concerns or the proximity to things outside of the smaller community. And so it's a bit of a catch-22. Um, the benefits of the small town also mean that there are some challenges in providing the amenities that would be an attractor for those younger youth or folks in their, um, earlier mid twenties. When it came to a future vision, so we really started off with a white flip chart and a marker. And I asked for folks to just call out different, um, phrases or words as they were thinking about their ideal version of Boulder City in twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty and beyond. So that included everything from being small, safe, clean and uncrowded. Um, some folks focused on the negatives and what they did not want to be, which was like the cities of Henderson or the cities of Sedona, Sedona. They didn't want it to be crowded. They didn't want it to be, um, difficult for locals to be able to navigate. They also didn't want short-term rental housing. So they wanted it to maintain the community feel of folks who are invested in the community because they live here. Um, they mentioned wanting to see more diversity, both economically, culturally, racially and by population age. Although we've discussed the population age diversity a little bit more today. They love the thriving and historic downtown and want it to be maintained. and also want the community to continue to be inclusive and sustainable. There's also a desire to see more effective and accessible community and social services. Part of that is related to our discussions about the community liaison position that's seen as a real joiner between folks who are trying to navigate resources and the resources that are already accessible or, or in existence. And then also a desire to be business-friendly, youthful and vibrant, and then compassionate, respectful and with a culture of care within the community. Our last activity here is related to a little bit of an impact versus investment matrix. And so I always like to say that if a money tree exists, I haven't figured out where one grows. And so for every investment that is made, you need to weigh what the potential impact of that investment will be and also what you're reducing in order to invest in a new category. And so for this activity, we asked that folks throw out their big ideas, right? So that could be truly anything. And you'll see on the next slide that that encompassed truly all ideas, big, small, broad, across the spectrum of potential priority areas. But there was a catch. They couldn't just throw out an idea. They also had to categorize it on the potential impacts that it could have, whether it was going to have a low or high impact. And then also how challenging it would be to implement. These areas were identified and labeled based on their potential impact and also the investment that would be required to make them successful. So in this case, something that was high potential, so had the potential for having a significant impact, but that was also low challenge, was considered a goldmine. Something that we should definitely do because it wouldn't necessarily be challenging to enact. Something that was, had high potential impact but was also highly challenging was a moonshot. Maybe it needed a little bit more vetting or evaluation. Maybe there needed to be additional conversations on exactly how it would work, but it was, it had the potential to be highly impactful. Quick wins were things that might have a little bit less impact, but also were going to be easier to enact. So it's easy, it moves the, the needle forward a little bit or moves the ball forward a little bit, a quick win. And then finally, the last category, which is the bottom right-hand quadrant, was questionable. These are things that would be highly challenging, but that might not have a significant impact. And so I'd say that this was one of the more challenging activities. It's very easy to just drop coins into an ice cream container. It's a little bit harder to think about the implications and also the applicability of some of the ideas and how one would actually move something forward. So you'll see that these are color-coded based on their quadrant. These are the ideas that were provided by our residents here. There's a wide variety of things. So I mentioned that it spans everything from permanently funding or institutionalizing the community liaison role, essentially finding non-soft money for that role, which was characterized as a quick win, as was better enforcing existing codes. So not creation of new codes or regulations, but enforcement of the existing codes that are currently on the books. Those were viewed as the quick wins, that light gray in the bottom left-hand category. So low impact, but also low effort. In the top category, so the goldmine category, which has, is greater potential and then also lower, lower impact or investment, that included improving the resource navigation, so making sure that residents knew how to get to both resources that are included in the city or just how to navigate the public government system as well. It included pride month recognition by the city, better integrating technology into city operations and using task forces to drive community engagement. So having more city and resident involvement in priorities as they are rolled out. Additional goldmines, and again, these are characterized by the, the participants in the focus group, include additional recycling options, so citywide composting and also the composting and wood chipping of Christmas trees after the holidays to reduce the usage of the landfill. That was viewed as a goldmine. Reexamination of the growth ordinance to consider how it is currently being carried out and monetizing existing infrastructure. So are there ways that the existing infrastructure that is owned by the city, whether that's land or physical buildings, could be monetized in a way that is revenue generating to at least cover the maintenance costs? Many of these buildings have significant maintenance costs just to keep the building open, safe for public use, the utilities on. So is there a way to continue, to consider how those are being used so that they at least cover their costs? Some of the other areas that are considered moonshots, so these are areas that have high potential but that might require additional investment. It's everything from investing in additional affordable senior housing and building a central, building or creating a central community center. Didn't necessarily need to be built, perhaps it could be through an existing building. Diversifying the types of housing available in the city and considering a library basement expansion to create more public space that could be used by community groups and for additional programming beyond just storage. The final moonshot area, and it is intentionally off the chart, so the instructions by the person that, that recommended it were to tape it to the side because it was so, such a big idea and such a moonshot that, that he wanted it to intentionally be placed even outside the quadrant, was the idea of investing at the city level in subsidized cooperative community, where there would be a buy-in, but it would essentially allow for folks to come in, there to be subsidized housing, but there to be an increasing almost rent-to-own component or opportunities for the city to create pathways for younger folks who might be just starting off to come, be part of the community and then build up the resources necessary to then maybe potentially move to a more traditional single-family house. The one area that is in the questionable category is the investment in the city helping to reopen the movie theater. So there is desire to see more of the space for performing arts there and so the theater is seen as one of those spaces. But even the person that proposed that mentions that it was potentially questionable in terms of its impact, particularly compared to some of the other ideas that were shared during that same community visit. Questions on the community workshops? Yes, ma'am?
Going over this, it's kind of, there wasn't that very many people that participated, which is kind of sad. And being that you're in this business, mailing out one of these surveys for somebody to fill out, do you get better results or is it about the same? I mean, I'm just wondering if we should mail a survey to everybody to find out where they're at?
Oh, the, the survey or the community workshops?
The survey.
Oh, the survey.
How they feel about all of these things. If you can't get them to come to community workshop, I think what we have, I forget what our number was, that actually did a survey online.
So about three hundred forty-two or forty-four, just under three hundred fifty, three hundred forty-four.
And so have you, or is there an opposition to that or does it stay about the same? I, I'm not in this area of expertise, so I'm asking you. If mailing a survey, would, does that provide more feedback?
So sometimes it can increase the participation rates. I would say that this participation rate, given the size of the community, is actually fairly high. So it's just around three percent. That's actually much higher than what we see in other municipalities. Often, especially with a convenience where folks are provided the opportunity, they are not forced or incentivized to participate in the survey. We see less than one percent of respondents. So it is not unusual to have a harder time getting higher rates of community engagement. Often, folks tend to show up a little bit more when they are upset about something, unfortunately. It's harder to get folks to show up to want to celebrate the good things and to participate in visioning, although that's very energizing for some people. And so the fact that folks showed up in smaller numbers but also had very rich conversations means that I think that the people who wanted to participate had an opportunity to do so. But again, the survey response rate, especially for a town that is just under fifteen thousand people, was very high. Again, our, our most recent municipal survey with a much larger community was, I think, less than half a percent in participation.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so I know that I have gone through a significant amount of information. And so I'm, I'm not done yet, though. So I'm going to continue giving you more information, but it's going to be in a little bit more of a digestible way. And so one of the areas, as, as we think about our future conversation, which will take place in April eight, on April eighteenth, is about thinking about areas of opportunity. That can be in the form of strengths that can be built upon, outright opportunities, and then also the need to invest or at least consider potential threats to the city's wellbeing. We've mentioned that throughout, as we've reported out on the interviews and on the focus groups, as well as some of the discussions of issues to consider that even came up through the community workshop. This is another level or lens of a SWOT analysis. And this is the beginnings of the SWOT analysis that we wanted to share as a way of digesting all of this information and thinking of it with a little bit more data added to it. So some of the strengths that were identified, and these were provided both through conversations with folks as well as through much of the desk research that was completed, through documentation that was provided through the city, public rankings of the city as it pertains to other municipalities as well. So a mix of sources here. We'll go through the strengths and weaknesses as well as the opportunities and threats. So not surprisingly, very consistent with the feedback from interviews, from surveys, this is an environment and a culture where city employees enjoy their jobs and residents enjoy living in their communities. Overwhelmingly, people are here because they want to be here. And so that does something versus the folks who live here but don't necessarily want to engage. There's a tremendous sense of pride in the civic participation, in being part of this community and in many of the opportunities and amenities that have been invested in by the community, either the community or the city in particular when it comes to amenities. There are also high-ranking schools here, so the quality of the schools is high. Folks feel as though when their students come here and they attend the schools, they're able to receive a high-quality education. There is also a very significant sense of safety that came up in many of our listening sessions and community workshops as we asked folks what they enjoyed about living here. They know that it is a safe environment, they feel comfortable walking their dogs late at night, early in the morning. They feel comfortable with their students and their, their children being able to walk around. Safety is both a feeling and also it is a rated benefit of this community. There are significantly lower total crime rates, violent crime rates and property crime rates compared to that of Nevada. This is a much safer community, even comparatively, beyond just the sense of safety that folks have. There's also a significant investment in transparency when it comes to the fiscal oversight of the city. So the city was awarded, very recently, a certificate for its excellence in financial reporting. So there is transparency, there is accessibility from residents who want to have that oversight function into the municipal functionings, which is a tremendous strength. The city also owns far more assets, so a significant number of assets, whether that's land and buildings than other comparably sized municipalities, meaning that it's able to offer far more amenities that are city-funded and city-backed than other municipalities of its size, particularly related to both building space. So even in the, the buildings that we were able to use for our public workshops, as well as in the park infrastructure, which is very extensive and robust and enjoyed by residents and pointed to as a strength of living in Boulder City. It also has been intentionally positioned in the last years and decade as an intentional tourist destination, both for valley residents and for visitors from across the country and world. And that has turned it into having more of a base for businesses. Businesses can be focused on, not just serving residents, but also serving folks who might want to come for a shorter period of time. That's a strength because it provides an ongoing base of potential consumers for those businesses to operate on and also continues to reinforce potential jobs for local residents. The city is also able to leverage multiple funding sources for its city projects. So in particular, the use of the solar leases has allowed for a significant portion or proportion of the city's budget to come from, not just from taxes, but actually from revenue that is being generated through the judicious use of the land that's available, taking a lot of the burden for many of these services off the backs of residents because of those alternative revenue sources. All of those are strengths in how the city functions and many of the opportunities that are available to it. As we think about some of the weaknesses, though, I always like to think of, I will be very frank and say that oftentimes when I try to characterize things as weaknesses versus opportunities, I get stuck because maybe this is the internal optimist in me. I think of most weaknesses as opportunities if they're reframed. But for the sake of this discussion, I will include some discussion of weaknesses before we get to the opportunity section. There is a high cost of living here. Certainly, there's a high cost of living that has been increasing rapidly over the last two years, not just in Boulder City, not just in Nevada, but really nationwide. We all know this is, is the truth and, and a lived experience of our residents. However, the cost of living in Boulder High, Boulder City is higher even than surrounding areas, particularly related to housing costs. And so it is a challenge to invest or access affordable housing in Boulder City proper. In addition to the overall cost of living and also the increases in the general cost of housing, there is a lack of ADA accessibility in many of the public facilities throughout the city. So while the city's population skews a little bit older, not all areas of the city are necessarily fully accessible to those who might have ADA needs, particularly sidewalks, streets and even central areas throughout the city that might also be used by visitors, short-term visitors, who might come for the day or weekend as tourists. There are also some out-of-date or aging technologies and softwares, as well as manual operating processes that have been identified. We've discussed those in many of the student, I'm sorry, the, the employee survey responses, this desire to see potential integration or better integration of technology and modern technology into processes. But that is an area that both stymies the ability of workers in the city in being their most efficient and also can be very frustrating for those folks who are interacting with the city and perhaps expecting to have more insight into the processes and the step-by-step nature of some of these processes that they might receive in other municipalities, even in the surrounding area. And then finally, while the significant ownership of land and the infrastructure throughout the city is a strength in that it allows the city to invest and provide many amenities for its residents, it also is a weakness because anything that has a cost to it also requires maintenance. And so there's a significant maintenance carry cost that is associated with keeping things like a golf course open or the extensiveness of buildings open and available to the public and safe, as well as continuing to make sure that they are sort of well-maintained and not eyesore's. You'll see that the, again, my, my bias is showing a bit here. So you'll see that the opportunities list is far longer than the weakness list. When we think about potential opportunities or investments for the city, that ranges from everything from electric infrastructure investment and more broadly, I would say, utility infrastructure investment, continuing to make sure that these are in line with best practices and also the efficient but also cost-effective, given that one of the benefits of living here is the city-owned utilities. Other opportunities include facilitation or prioritization of additional and more diverse housing options, particularly related to prioritizing affordable senior housing for the population. We know that this population tends to be a bit older in age and so making sure that there's accessibility there. Updating the Wi-Fi infrastructure and investing in the high-speed fiber infrastructure. This is also related to potential federal funding that can be put down. So when we think about what this opportunity could look like, there is a lot of funding that is available, not necessarily from the city budget, but with use of drawdown funds from the federal opportunities related to infrastructure investment. And so that represents a real opportunity to, to be able to make these investments, but not to carry the full cost of those upgrades. Increasing tourism through either continued investment in the outdoor recreational offerings that are currently available or simply marketing them in a way that makes them a little bit more well-known to members could draw in additional tourists and visitors to the city who can come, who can enjoy the amenities, who can invest by use of getting to be patrons at many of the businesses here before then leaving the area. So promotion of the day trips from around the valley, create this as a place to visit and come either for the recreational activities or continuing to build on many of the festivals or events that have already received a lot of popularity from even visitors in Southern Nevada. There's an opportunity as well to reinforce the accessibility through the investment in the ADA compliance for city-owned infrastructure. This is also an area where there are possibilities of drawing down federal funding and also state funding as well. So these So these investments that do need to be made can be made in partnership with an additional funding source versus primarily paid through the city's fund and through the city's budget investment. Meeting the potential growth, the, the full potential of the growth ordinance annually is one potential opportunity to both address some of the housing challenges as well as to realize some of the priorities that have been put forward in the workshops. It is an opportunity, and I, I want to stress that it says "meeting the full potential", it is not getting rid of or amending, it is just thinking about how the growth ordinance is currently carried out as a way of perhaps alleviating some of those challenge areas for residents. And then finally, the expansion of emergency services as more folks are coming into the city, even for one-time or multi-day events, making sure that there is the, the appropriate ratio of police and fire services to serve those people were a potential event to be created, as well as an investment in continuing to modernize their equipment with the goal of reducing their response times. Part of this is the same challenge with technology, right? You might make a large significant investment in technology 10 years ago and feel like it was a very large amount of money, because it was, and you might find that the technology is obsolete or aging out even in the span of five to seven to 10 years. Much of the infrastructure here when it comes to emergency services can be viewed in the same way. Unfortunately, when you make a one-time investment, it doesn't mean that you cannot, choose not to invest in that in perpetuity. So threats, potential threats to, to the city and factors to consider particularly in our future conversations. By far, the largest portion, 61.7% of the city's net position, is in its investments and capital assets. And so this is a very, very high percentage, particularly for a city this size, in terms of its infrastructure and where those assets lie. Land and other lease revenues, primarily from solar but from other purposes as well to a lesser extent, are, continue to be a really crucial component for the city to provide its essential services. There are potential threats related to use of the land purely for solar leases. Solar is also evolving at a very high rate or a very fast rate, and so there could be a world in 15 to 20 years where those solar leases are not going to be quite as lucrative or quite as necessary for that industry, meaning that that would be a huge, significant proportion of the revenue that the city uses for its operating budget, not just for its reserves, that could be at risk in the medium-term timeframe. Roughly 80% of the businesses in Boulder City are small businesses. That is great because it contributes to all of the things that people love about living here. One of the challenges are that small businesses tend to have greater rates of turnover, and so you see less of that staying power. They tend to have higher rates of failure, there's greater turnover there, and so that means that there is potentially greater turnover in some of your central areas that are visited by visitors, but also in those businesses that are serving your local populations. I think of that particularly related to some of the challenges with grocery store accessibility, for instance, that came up repeatedly in the workshops. There's also a potential for losing the CLG status of the city without continued preservation of historic areas. So historic preservation was one of the five pillars of the previous strategic plan. It's also an area of interest and priority for many residents in the city, not just because of the sort of quaint charm that it protects, but also because there's a revenue generation or an economic incentive attached to maintaining those historic areas. And so if historic preservation does not continue to be a priority, there is the potential risk of losing that status and those incentives that are associated with that without the intentional maintenance. The city's population, as has been discussed multiple times, skews a little bit older. So for instance, the median age of the city is 53. It means that there are larger proportions of folks who are not necessarily working or who, if they are working, are at the tail end of their careers. It also means that ultimately the city has a smaller working-age population than comparable general populations in other cities. That has implications or potential implications on the ability of the schools to continue operating as the number of children continues to shrink, as well as, I'm thinking about the workforce for local businesses. You need folks who are going to be serving in many of those roles that might not be a full-time career, and it's going to be harder to attract and retain those folks because they might not be able to afford to live in this community, but it also doesn't necessarily make sense for them to commute 20, 30 minutes from other parts of the valley for these jobs, just, just because of the cost of gas and the cost of the commute time. The low housing supply and the perceived lack of affordable housing options also limits, continues to limit or exacerbates the city's ability to diversify its population base. You can cut that anyway as you're thinking about diversity, but in particular, younger families, those folks who might be in blue-collar jobs that are starting out, they don't necessarily have the revenue generation to be able to afford some of the homes in this area, and so it impacts the, just what the community looks like and who gets to be part of this community. There are also implications for the workforce and also just the tax base because of that. Previously passed limitations, and I, I promise I'm, I'm closer to the end on this, I know it's a lot of text. Some of the previously passed legislation and requirements on municipal actions require residents to be more informed and engaged than the average resident in many other municipalities. So for instance, some of the limitations on spending, the use of the land, all of those need to go through voter approval. It also means, bless you, that the voters need to be more engaged and generally aware of these processes. You know, we mentioned that one of the challenges is in getting folks to participate in civic action, even in a community the size that has a much higher rate than other communities. So one of these challenges is that in order to move things through particularly larger investments, there also needs to be an investment in education of voters. That's not necessarily a bad or good thing, but it is a threat because it means that there might need to be a little bit more of a time investment for anything that you want to get passed on a larger scale. And then finally, this is related partially to the, the city's ability to diversify. The city does tend to be a little bit more Caucasian, so 88.2% of the population is white alone compared to Nevada's all-white, white-alone population of 72%. So it skews a little bit older, it skews a little bit wider. So in terms of diversity of experiences, perspectives in the city, it tends to be a little bit more homogeneous than other populations. I'm going to pause there and take a breath. Okay, I would be remiss, the inner teacher in me would be remiss if I ended any meeting without next steps or homework. So as a next step, we will be circulating a pre, what we are calling a pre-workshop online survey, so this will be emailed to you in the next day or two. We are asking for your response by April 9th. I know that this is not a lot of turnaround time, so I apologize, but this is so that we're able to gather your responses and then use them as the basis for starting our conversation when we get back together on the 18th. And so this is an opportunity for you to provide some thought on where you see real opportunities based on the large body of feedback that you've received tonight, to ask additional questions. If there are things that need to be clarified or further explored, you'll have an opportunity to provide those comments as well. But it's more to get us started so that we can really make sure that we're judiciously and expeditiously using our time on the 18th when we get back together. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for your patience and your thoughtful attention.
Thank you, appreciate it. That was very well done, appreciate the work that went into that. Thank you. So I'll ask our city manager on the 18th, if we do all these things that we're going to do on the 9th, get it back to you, and then you will have the opportunity to put those in some kind of format so that we can have our discussion in the open meeting law and be able to come up with some kind of direction that the city council would like to do.
I believe we can do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If there are no questions, I'll say I appreciate you being here, and I would open the meeting for public comment.
Barbara Paulson speaking on behalf of the Boulder City Cluster of Nevadans for the Common Good. We appreciate the work done by Emergent Method and the city to involve its residents and community entities in the development of the new strategic plan, so we thank you for that opportunity to participate. Nevadans for the Common Good is glad to see that the Community Resource Liaison position was referenced several times during the community sessions. You know, this is a position that's very near and dear to our hearts. This demonstrates, because several people from different parts of the city spoke on this, it demonstrates the impact that this program has already made in our community, helping people navigate that complicated system to get services they need. And she has also done outstanding work in establishing relationships with many people in the community, particularly our most vulnerable and many of the people that we don't often hear from, that don't engage in the community as much, some of our lower-income, our homeless population. She's made great outreach to talk and get to know these people and really identify what, what their needs are. We hope that the developing strategic plan will include a pathway for this program to become sustainable, be an ongoing long-term program, and also serve as a coordinating hub among all our local service providers right now that are all doing great work, but many of them in their own little area. And this position could bring those people, we feel if they all work together and communicate together, overall, we can get better services for all of our citizens. The presentation that Robin just gave also included a number of comments from the surveys and the community meetings in that related to housing, the need to diversify our population, and a desire for a more vibrant business community. The developing strategic plan, we feel should provide a process for implementing the existing controlled growth ordinance in a manner that addresses these concerns and allows for modest growth, diversity of the population, expanded housing opportunities, which are already listed as goals of the current ordinance. We're very happy to see this working going on, and we look forward to continuing our advocacy through this process. Thank you very much. And I will leave a copy here for you.
Thank you. And if somebody wants to call in, 702-589-9629. And if someone else was here, they're welcome to come forward. And Madam City Clerk, is there any written comments?
No written comments were received.
Thank you. We will close the public comment, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.